So, uh, welcome to the Wenham Select Board meeting of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, starting at six oh one P M. Uh, this is a Zoom virtual meeting. All votes will be by roll call. It is being recorded and the president this evening from the select board is Gary Cheeseman.
Diane Buka.
Peter Clay.
Thank you. So if you can scroll the slide, Michelle, please. Anybody, uh, with a public input this evening? Any hands? Michelle or Joe?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Then we'll move on past public input. Into, uh, new business. Alright.
Excuse me, Gary.
Yes.
Since we're gonna, um, have some discussions, can we turn off the screen share so we can see each other when we talk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. It looks like Michelle Bailey was trying to log in. She does have her hand raised.
Alright. Then we'll step back. Michelle. If you could identify your street address and the topic.
Hi, uh, Michelle Bailey. Topic is, uh, the elections. Um, and I'm just wondering if you could give an update on, um, if you know how many positions have been, um, not had people return papers?
Yes.
And also if you could give an update on when you will be, um, finalizing the warrant and including the, uh, three to five question on it.
So the, uh, the first question, so yes, I throw a pitch out there. I think we have had people draw papers on every position except for the Board of Assessors. So I'm not, uh, totally up to speed on what papers have been returned for what position, but the one position that is totally vacant right now is the Board of Assessors, one slot. That's a three-year job. The, um, the elections, uh, the warrant was, uh, has been set. It's gone to K P Law and the, uh, three to five, the dead exclusions. And his Steve on, there was one other that will appear on the ballot. Steve, are you up yet?
He was not up yet.
Okay, so.
I can't get my computer.
So you'll be voting on that warrant when?
Well, the warrant, the warrant's already been voted.
The warrants are have been voted and.
For the election?
No, no, the warrant, a meeting warrant.
Right. That's what I'm asking. When will the warrant for the election be voted?
It is also on the same warrant.
Yeah, so any associated ballot questions that will, that will go on the, uh, ballot will be next meeting.
Okay.
Twenty-first.
So on the twenty-first, you'll be voting then?
Yeah.
Yes, the, uh, select board recommendations on each of the warrant articles. Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I need to be very clear on what I guess I'm asking.
On the ballot too, yes.
On the ballot because generally the ballot has to be voted separately from the town meeting warrant. So when will you be voting on the ballot?
Well, the twenty-first.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, why do, why do you think we have to vote separately? It's one warrant. Everything that goes on our, in.
The three to five won't be on the town meeting. At all. And so it, but it needs to be voted to be on the ballot, correct?
So if the ballot, the election ballot is also on the town meeting warrant. It's the last article and it will have to include the ballot, uh, any, any ballot question will need to be on that warrant on that last article.
Super. Yeah, because I haven't heard anything discussed about that being in the warrant book up to this point. So that's why I was, wanted to be sure that it was there.
But it's, it's, the legislature has told us to do that, so it will be done without a doubt.
Alright, thank you, Michelle. Alright, then back to, uh, new business then. And.
The discussion on the Article One?
Yes, here it comes up, right?
Or Article Two, sorry.
So, uh, discussion on the, uh, Article Two, which talks about, uh, whether we want to use electronic voting or the cards. So, uh, Diane, I'll turn it over to you as the, uh, okay, previous expert on this and your, uh, comments.
So I'm sorry again, but can we take off the, the screen share so I can see? I, yeah, thank you. So I did bring this back to a meeting because I don't think personally that we need to have a ballot that needs to be a warrant article, whether we use electronic voting or not. I think it's the, up to the, um, moderator to decide how we vote. And I think we can, um, discuss with the moderator offline and bring it to town meeting um, and vote any way we'd like to. I think it's a great idea to get feedback from the public, but I don't think that they can vote whether they want to use primarily one specifically the clicker voting because for one, many people have never used it. For two, we do own them, so it would be good to use them, but some people will either remember them and did not like them. Some people will remember them and like them a lot, and then some people don't know anything about them. So I think a better way to go is to bring it to town meeting and work with it. Um, of course, run this by Roger. Maybe he can moderator smirage, see if he can, um, chime in as well, but I think that's a better way to bring it to our public rather than having them vote on something that I don't think that they really have a good feeling for.
Alright, so, uh, Roger, let me go to you first and then back to Peter, if that's alright with you, Peter?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Gary, and, uh, thank you, members of the select board. Uh, so a- as Diane said, Wenham has the clicker technology, for lack of a better terminology. That's what the company that, uh, distributes it, a company called Meridia. They call it the clicker technology, so we'll just go with that. Um, Wenham, uh, purchased the clicker, uh, technology in twenty twenty, uh, using, I believe, CARES Act funds. Uh, Wenham has four hundred clickers plus the, uh, the system that's required to run them. Um, and given that Wenham has this technology at its disposal, uh, I asked, uh, Steve and Joe to, uh, convene, uh, uh, you know, uh, a group to discuss how and whether to, uh, implement that technology, uh, going forward. Uh, as Diane said, it is ultimately my decision as the town moderator, how town meeting votes. And while I think there are, uh, you know, plenty of positives to just using the voting cards, the way, uh, Wenham has traditionally done it. There are also a number of, uh, positives in using the clicker technology. Um, one of the main ones, uh, besides just accuracy, rather than having the moderator declare a vote and, uh, then potentially resort to a counted vote if the moderator can't declare, or if seven or more of the voters at town meeting call the vote into question. Uh, in addition, accuracy right from the get-go, it allows, uh, the moderator declare a vote with a precise set of yays and nays. And the town clerk, uh, or the presiding clerk at that meeting to record that. So that if there's any question down the road about the quantum of vote, uh, you can simply go back to the me- meeting minutes and, uh, assess whether the motion passed by a given threshold or not. Um, there are other pros, the speed, et cetera. And as a group, uh, the, um, the, the group, the study group, for lack of a better term, you know, felt that it was in the town's favor to, uh, make use of the technology going forward. But given the reaction that I recall, uh, occurred after its use in twenty twenty, I did not want to impose it on the town at town meeting. I want to make sure it's something the town meeting wants to use. Um, in an informed manner as Diane suggests. Uh, so that was, uh, I believe why, uh, it was brought to the select board as a possible warrant article. I was not aware it was going to be in the form of a bylaw per se. Uh, I don't necessarily think that a bylaw, um, right from the jump is the way to go. I think maybe if, uh, that's something the town wants to consider down the road. Uh, we can get there, but I think the most important thing is to get this technology back in front of town meeting and, uh, see how, how we can use it, um, in a way that town meeting wants to use it. My proposed methodology for using it would be, uh, to have it simply reflect the yays and nays, not, uh, reflect the names of individual voters. Uh, the Meridia technology does not require clickers to be, uh, registered or assigned to individual voters at town meeting. You can complete, you can do it in a completely anonymous fashion. And in order to also, um, adhere to the Wenham tradition of having a very open process at town meeting, I would also still call for people, um, to stand, uh, and, you know, while they are using the clickers to vote, to reflect the yays and nays. That way, people on the floor of town meeting could see how, uh, the other voters are voting. Uh, one thing that I do not want the Meridia technology to be used is basically as a substitute secret ballot. I think that defeats, uh, both the purpose and the tradition of town meeting. And under town meeting time, uh, it actually requires a motion, uh, on the floor of town meeting for any motion to go to a secret ballot. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions, Gary, that you or the rest of the board have. Um, but like I said, I think the, the key principle here is, uh, getting this technology back in front of town meeting and seeing how we can use it in a way that makes sense for Wenham.
Thank you, Roger. Peter, comments, questions?
No, I'm fully supportive of, of, of what Roger's saying, and I like we're not going to have anonymous voting. So I, I think that's good.
Alright, back to you, Diane.
So, um, how we use the clickers, I think we can all just discuss, but I, I guess the discussion here tonight is whether to keep that warrant article on. The ma- keep that article on the warrant or not, and I would, um, like to make a motion that we remove that article from the town meeting warrant for twenty twenty-three, Article Two.
Alright, so, um, no second yet, so let me pose a question here to, uh, Roger. So it sounds like, uh, we don't want to go to a bylaw, certainly at this point. And which really means we don't need the warrant article. The moderator could introduce this as a subject in your preliminary, uh, talk. Is that correct, Roger?
No, um, I either have to set the method of voting or there would have, if, if it was something that, uh, was to be debated, um, then there has to be a warrant article, whether it's, uh, you know, for a if, if it's not for a proposed bylaw, it would either be to set a policy for this meeting or to study the issue or whatever it may be. Um, what I would like to see at this meeting, uh, is that, you know, we, and we will the Meridia team, uh, will be at Hamilton's Town Meeting, I believe, uh, this year. They have offered, Joe can correct me on any of the details here. They have offered to come to the Wenham meeting and run a demonstration of how we would use the system. Um, so, but if there is to be open debate on the issue, Gary, there needs to be some form of warrant article to allow that. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to give it a, uh, to give it a go and see what we get for feedback. I think that was one of the things that maybe, um, got lost in the, the pandemic shuffle was having an opportunity for a, a real public feedback on the use of the clicker system after twenty twenty. Um, and then I, I know, I think there was a technology issue with its use in twenty twenty-one. I wasn't moderator at the time, but, um, you know, I, I think we could certainly, uh, you know, show town meeting what the system can do, how we would propose using it, and then, you know, see if it's something that they, you know, want to use for voting for just this meeting and, you know. I'm hopeful that people would, because I think it's, and I, and I would certainly, you know, be willing to explain the reasons why.
So I'm thinking the, uh, the question here is, how do we get the, uh, the public body understanding of the system without, uh, forcing a major, uh, warrant article vote on it? So is there a, uh, a way that we can demonstrate the technology on a sample vote? I believe we did that a couple of meetings ago.
Yep.
Meetings ago.
Yeah, so def- they can definitely do that, and they would do that anyway, even if, um, if the system were being used for the voting on the warrant articles, because they would want to run some tests just to make sure the system is operating properly. Uh,
I'm sorry, Roger.
Oh, no, go ahead, Steve.
No, no, please finish, please.
Uh, I, I, I think I was coming to the end of, uh, my answer to Gary's question.
Uh, I, I guess, you know, it'll go back with, but a warrant article to just for the primary voting for this meeting, or the non-binding. We're going to try it for this, and as part of the article, like we do presentations for like the school fields or whatever, it's like, here's, uh, you know, Meridia is with us. Here's what it can do. Everybody, you know, putting like a fake question up there. What's your favorite color, red or blue? And you know what I mean? You click and click on your clicker and they can show you what it's going to look like. And then based on that, the, you know, the town meeting can decide, yeah, let's try it for this meeting. I feel like if we leave it up in the air, you're either going to make a, a call at the beginning and say, make it, this is the way we're going to go, or, you know, I feel like if we get a situation where we're flip-flopping between methods depending on what folks want.
If I can just add, Steve, um, that.
No, a second, Joe. So Diane, yes.
So I, I think we're, we're overthinking it a little bit. I think, um, what I would recommend is that we check voters in, give them a clicker and give them a, a card, a voting card, and on the voting card, there's directions for the clicker. And we start the voting and, and, and we attempt to use the clickers. And with a test vote and this, that, and the other thing, if Roger feels it's going well, we continue with it. There's no need to have a vote on that. If it's not going well, Roger has the decision to say, we're going to go back to voting cards. And I, I don't, I don't really think you need to do anything more. I don't, I don't think it's part of, I don't think it's a non-binding question. I think it's just town meeting that we should just go with.
Uh, I totally support what Diane just said.
Sure. Alright, so Roger, you're the, uh, moderator for the meeting. You think that's going to work okay?
I think that works fine. I mean, that would be the, that would be the approach anyway. You would always have the backup. You would always have the warrant, uh, the voting cards distributed as the backup in case there was a technology issue anyway. Um, so if that's, I'm, I'm good with that approach. I think the clicker system should be used. Um, and I think by implementing it in the way we're proposing to implement it, we are avoiding some of the concerns that I heard coming out of, uh, its use in twenty twenty.
Alright. Then, uh, sorry.
Oh, I'll, I'll second Diane's motion.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion seconded, and this will remove the warrant article question on the, uh, the meeting. What, Diane?
Joe, Joe had, was going to say something.
Yeah, I got, I got, now I got a second on the floor, so gotta go ahead with the.
Motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
So this first one is to delete the current Article Two that would have, uh, set up the, uh, clickers. So Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, so sorry, Joe, we got to get that done, and I propose now that I'll invite Joe in, and then I think we can make a motion of a recommendation from the select board to the moderator that we use the dual system. Think that would satisfy your requirement, Roger?
Yes, I, I think so. And, and one other thing that I would note is that, um, the Meridia system can also be used for elections on the floor. And I think that's a particular benefit for this town meeting where we may have an election on the floor for the interim town clerk, so I just wanted to add that.
Right. Joe, a comment?
Yep, just a minor side, side note, just something might help ease some people's minds. Meridia said they will be working with us step by step at the meeting. Um, basically holding our hand to make sure, uh, it goes without a hitch. So I just wanted to throw that in there as well.
Alright, thank you, Joe. So Diane, you want to formulate the motion that we use the dual system? Not, not use it, but recommend, the select board recommends to the moderator that we use the dual system?
So I make a motion that the select board recommend to the moderator that we utilize the Meridia clickers um, with a backup of voting cards for the annual town meeting, April twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Thank you. And any further comment? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Very yes. And thank you, Roger. I think you have what you need.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, uh, Peter. Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Alright. Next order of business is, um, discussion on the intended methodology on Article nineteen, change from elected to appointed town clerk. So, uh, to start this off, we have had, uh, legal opinion waiting on, on this. And, um, Peter or Diane, do you want to start off the discussion? Peter, you're muted.
Can we, uh, Michelle, can we see that? Please? Oh, we don't have the backup? The packet had it. Uh, the packet separate from the, from the PowerPoint. Yep. So I thought the first option was the best way to go. I think having a, um, a temporary clerk for a whole year doesn't really seem to make sense to me.
Well, the.
So, uh, you mean?
Can I go through the high level of?
Yeah, let's, let's stick. So.
We, we can take down the, um, the PowerPoint again. I'm sorry.
Um, someone, uh, please mute your TV.
That's my husband, too.
Alright, so, uh, Steve, yes, can you summarize the high-level options here?
Yeah, so high level, there's two options. One is under General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one B. So that is, the way that would look would be, there would be a warrant article on this year's town meeting. Then it states that, um, more if, than the local election, that's more than sixty days after your, uh, special town, uh, after your town meeting, there has to be a question on the ballot, so that would be the April of twenty-four ballot. That would, is, so we would, we would ask, we would ask the town meeting in twenty-three, if you want to change from elected to appointed, if they say yes, you want to change it to appointed, it would go to the ballot in twenty-four. If they say yes, then we would change from elected to appointed, but the elected official that's currently holding the office would continue to hold that office until the end of their term, so, which is three years, so it wouldn't be effective until April.
Twenty-six.
April of twenty-six. The other way is through to request, uh, special legislation. And the way that this, this would, this, the, the timeline of this would be, a warrant article would be on this town meeting. And it would ask, uh, the town meeting whether they want to change from elected to appointed, and if they say, in, in part of the warrant article would be to then task, you know, the select board to submit special legislation to the legislature to essentially make this, you know, enact this for us to go, by going around Chapter forty-one. And, um, so you would have the warrant on twenty-three, you would then, um, file the, file the special act, uh, go through just like the three to five, go through the Senate, then through the House, then it would come back to us. And they may or may not require, uh, a local election where town meeting, you know, due to the fact that we submitted legislation, town meeting would have voted favorably for the change, so that may be enough that they wouldn't require us to take it to the ballot. And if they did take us to, to the ballot, we would have two options. We could have a special election, or wait to, if, you know, likely it's going to be probably about a year, so it's probably going to be the local election will be right around the corner anyways. And at that point, we could put the question on the ballot, and then it would be effective as soon as the results from that ballot changed. And generally, they, they like to see some sort of succession plan in the, uh, you know, in the text of the special, uh, legislation, so it would be something to the, um, to the effect of, you know, if it was to happen earlier than a year, the, you know, the, the person in the seat would hold the position for minimum of twelve months or, you know, three months more after the act becomes, um, enacted through the, through the legislature.
Diane? You've held the position before.
So I think everyone probably knows that I feel it should be an elected position. I understand people wanted appointed for different reasons, and we could discuss them if we want right now, but for the, the point of this meeting is to decide whether the select board wants to place an article on the warrant in twenty twenty-three to make this change. Um, it seems to me that it would be redundant. There is a citizen's petition that's asking for the same thing. And, um, I would just say we only need one article for this, for this situation to happen, so I would suggest that we not put an article on the warrant and just let the citizen's petition do its thing.
Peter? Comments? Well, let me ask one question. Steve, you have the, uh, citizen's petition. Does it, uh, follow the special act route or the, uh, general law, Chapter forty-one route?
Yeah, Chapter, it's be forty-one B, so I just want, you know, you guys to keep in mind that that's a three-year timeframe, when if, you know, we were to go to the special act route, it would, it could likely take place, uh, within a twelve-month time period. So I would not agree with going with the citizen's petition. I understand where Dye's coming from, and I would do the second option, um, Steve talked about.
So I, the special act, uh, Peter?
Yes.
So the, uh, the drive, I think, for the, um, change in status here is the fact, from my point of view, is that we've seen the last, uh, national and state elections have a very close scrutiny on procedures and so forth. And I've seen the working, uh, within Town Hall over the last two years, the need for, uh, you know, professional person in the town clerk job. And that I see as only being able to be done if that position comes under the, uh, authority of the, uh, select board for appointments. So I'm kind of moving towards the, attempting the special act, uh, place. And I think, uh, if that, if we go with a special act, knowing that the, uh, the citizen's petition follows the general law, Chapter forty-one route, that will be giving the, uh, the town population as a whole, a clear up or down vote on the, uh, alternatives, because, uh, I believe the, uh, the citizen's petition cannot be changed or amended from the floor in any way. So to have a straight-up, uh, choice, I think we, uh, need a warrant article ourselves. Diane?
Oh, if I may, um, so I understand that, um, there's two reasons to, I mean, there's different intentions of making the position appointed as far as elected, um, and I don't, I think that for the, for the article that's coming to us, for us to put on the, on the art warrant is for, um, not for supervisory reasons. I think both elected or appointed are going to be a professional person or not a professional person. I think that an experienced person as well as an inexperienced person can make a lot of mistakes or not make mistakes. I think anyone that's in this position needs to want to be in this position. There's a big safety net. There's a lot of people to ask for help. I think the most important per- thing to do is get someone in the office that is willing to do the work and follow the direction of the Attorney General, the Secretary of State, the Office of Campaign Finance, and a mult- multitude of other things. There's nothing within Town Hall that's going to help an experienced or an inexperienced person do well at the job. So, um, with that said, I, I, I don't think that we, we should be rushing into making an appointed for reasons that the office has become more complicated. I think everybody's office is more complicated. The town administrator's office is more complicated. Finance is more complicated. Assessors, as we've seen, is more complicated. I think you just need someone in there full-time that's going to want to do the work. So I would stick with the citizen's petition and see if the town wants to make it appointed, and if that's the case, you go the, the general, mass general law process, in my opinion.
Peter, anything else?
Nope.
Alright, then, um, we. we need a motion onto the floor then, one way or another.
Right. I like, I mean, I can make my motion, but I it might be negative. So I don't know what you want to do. Or I'll make my motion. I'll make my motion. Let's see what you say. I move that we remove Article nineteen from the town meeting warrant with reference to moving elected to appointed for the April twenty twenty three warrant.
Is there a second? So go through the formality here. So otherwise, I hear no second. Peter, do you want to make a motion?
I have no idea how to make that motion. Unless I could.
Gary, you can make the motion.
Right. So I move that the select board place on the warrant, an article to propose changing the town clerk position from an elected to an appointed position under the special act provisions.
Second.
Any further comments? All right. So a little bit of split on this. We'll go the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
And Gary, yes. So it goes on to town meeting. The town will have two options to vote on.
So we will council will have to put that together with the full description on how the special act will be written, the appointing authority, the term, all those kind of things.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can follow on here as it's a, we're going down the special act route. So under the special act, Peter, what particular terms, appointing authority and so forth, would you propose? The the points that were made was that you know, the if it's under the special act, if it's going to be in a pointed position, then the select board may want to make it a shorter than usual term. Because
No, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Just in case we make a mistake.
Right. So Diane, any inputs on that, you know, one year, two year term, or what would you say if?
Because generally, generally, it would be a three year term unless we stipulated something else, correct?
Right.
So I think I understand that you want a safeguard, but I feel like one year is a is a short amount. There's no probationary period we can put in there? Oh, I just lost it.
So the yeah, so Steve, as I read the the legal opinion, the it could actually be determined to be a contract position?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you could keep that right. So you could in my understanding is that you could make it for a minimum of one year, or it's a went over, we needed that person to overlap for, you know, a minimum of additional three months after the and that at that point, it would be contract until the appointed person. But right, doesn't preclude.
I'm speaking the other way, Steve, that the the new slot, if it was to become an appointed position, the then select board could actually set the terms of the contract as far as length of employment terms and so forth. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it would follow ideally, it would be follow the bylaws. Personnel bylaws.
Yeah. Yeah, we really don't need to get into the details then of how that will be formulated contract wise at this moment.
Okay.
Right.
That's true.
Right. So the I would expect the warrant as written coming back from the town council will be generic enough that say that it will be a contract position to be negotiated at that time as terms. Much like the town administrator as such. That work with you, Peter?
Yes, it does.
Diane?
I think so. I think there's going to have to be something about the term for some reason, but let's see what happens when we get it back from KP.
All right. Sounds good then, then keep track here. So we made the motion. So we're going down the special act route as a warrant article and the citizen petition, which is the general law chapter root. And so we'll have a two two votes there. Right. Anything else on this one? All right. All right. So
We have to vote to open the warrant so we can make those changes?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So I move.
Okay.
I move that the one of select would vote to open the warrant for the April first twenty twenty three annual town meeting on February fourteen, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All in favor? Gary, yes?
Diane, yes.
Peter, yes.
Right. So the warrants open. And the first one we need is a motion to delete the original article two, Diane.
I move that the one of select board vote to remove Article two electronic voting for the April first twenty twenty three annual town meeting.
Second.
Anything else? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
There he is. And then we need a
To amend the Articles nineteen, I move that the one of select would vote to amend Article nineteen elected to appointed and pursue a special act for the April first twenty twenty three annual town meeting.
Second.
Anything further? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
There he is. All right.
So then I'm.
And then also remove the clicker.
I said electronic voting, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you? I'm sorry.
So two's off. Nineteen's amended. All right. And then last item while we're open here is a discussion and vote to add a town moderator commentary section to the warrant. So you want to handle that or is Roger still on to tell us what we really want here?
I see. I'm still here.
All right. Well, all right, Roger, your ideas on this.
Thank you, Gary. Again, with the select board's permission, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So the idea here was to put in the warrant book itself a two page note from the moderator that would cover some of the procedural steps and rules that apply to town meeting in an effort to streamline the introductory remarks that I have to make during the meeting itself. Some of those procedural remarks are a little bit more nuanced and may be better on paper than spoken from the podium. And I know people are always eager to get to the articles. I had submitted a draft of the proposed note to Steve over the weekend. And yeah, the idea is just to put those procedural steps in the warrant book going forward as a note from the moderator. It would, the intent would be that it would appear in each warrant for town meetings going forward. It's consistent. It's not time based or anything like that. Obviously, if there's revisions to the applicable rules, the note would be revised accordingly. But yeah, the idea was to save about, you know, five or up to ten minutes of me speaking at town meeting before we get to the good stuff.
Right. The certainly we've seen in the past, I think this would be beneficial, especially explaining some of the exceptional circumstances such as the what you can and cannot do with the citizen's petition, you know, where we're going to go with the two thirds vote or even more on the the article for last year's long overdue payments and so forth. So I think this will probably expedite a little bit. Peter?
I agree.
Diane?
Agreed. I think it's great.
Right. So
So I make a motion to include the note from the town moderator in the annual town meeting warrant book for April first twenty twenty three.
Second.
Thank you. And the roll call vote, if there's nothing else, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
There he is.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
And then I moved that the one of select would vote to close the warrant for the last time for the April first twenty twenty three annual town meeting on February fourteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
There he is. So the warrant is closed again. And we'll see what happens on the twenty first. All right. So next up is a discussion on the results of the Hamilton Warren Regional School District School Committee meeting of February nineteenth, twenty twenty three. So we've had that in the packet. And basically, the the school committee has forwarded a budget. Great thanks to Vincent Leon, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance Administration. So what about twenty pages of figures in great detail that far more than we've had access to in the past. So I see that as very much the cooperation between Hamilton Wenham and the schools to have more visibility into the expenses. For the public at large, you can go through the charts, but basically, the school budget is up by two point eight three percent with the enrollment shift that shows a fewer percentage wise of Wenham students. Hamilton comes in with three point nine four percent increase and went on with a zero point two two percent increase. So just above flat. Also, in the the school budget under, I think it was page thirty seven in our packet, you'll see that the capital stabilization fund in the amount of one million, six ninety eight thousand, two hundred and eighty seven dollars, which is a percentage of last year's budget is dedicated to plan for the school athletic fields project. Otherwise, the having sat in with the five chairs meeting in December and January, clearly, this budget reflects the school rationalizing several positions that remain vacant for months or years. So those have been removed from the budget. So that decreased the but but also the superintendent did say that following years here that they expect that the the budget will be increasing by a larger percentage. So Diane, comments on the school budget?
I think they did a really nice job. Work. That's it.
I think it's not just the school. I think it's both FinCom teams and and the select board teams working really well with the school committee.
And Eric. Yeah, certainly, the the information flow is great. And as saw what last month in the the five way, both FinComs, both select board and school committee meeting, that things went well there. Right. Steve, did you have anything to add about the school budget? You're muted.
I think you covered it well, Gary.
Right. Very well. Then that's informational only and on to the next item. So item H is the in person voting on early days. And this required a vote from the registrar or recommendation from the registrars, which we know now have so that this business is back before us again for a second vote. Any questions, comments on it, Diane?
I do not.
Peter?
No, I don't. I think it's great.
Right. So, yeah, so we'll well publicize the early voting. And as it says in red there, you know, don't confuse this. This is separate from mail in voting. So the early voting is just like on Election Day on the sixth of April, you can come in and do it early on the twenty eighth, twenty nine, thirty March and three April in person at Town Hall. So the motion, please, Diane?
I move that the one of select board adopt the early voting hours as recommended by the Board of Registars for the April sixth, twenty twenty three local election.
Second.
Anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Okay.
Gary, yes. All right. Passed. And in effect. So other matters. So upcoming schedule, so important dates are tomorrow night FinCom meets hopefully to make their final recommendations on the budget. The CPC meets Thursday night, if I'm correct. And then the select board will meet jointly on next Tuesday, the twenty first. We will receive the recommendations on the CPC warrant article. That we will then have a joint session with the Finance Committee where we'll have the final full budget presented. And then the Finance Committee will adjourn after we hear their recommendation votes. And then the select board will move into the solo session of the select board to go down through the list of articles with our recommended votes. That will be the bulk of the meeting. Did I miss anything, Steve?
No.
Yep. And also, we should say too, that the included in that will be the capital plan as well, which FinComs discussing tomorrow night. Sorry, right, Steve?
Yeah, so we'll have, right, capital will be tomorrow.
Right. We'll have that and hopefully the twenty first, that will be the final actions required to put the warrant, full warrant in place and be off to the printer. Peter, anything else?
Nope.
Diane?
No.
You want me to move?
Yeah, so we've got the
To executive.
And just one thing. So we plan on the twenty first, right, Steve, to be back in person in Town Hall for the meeting.
Yeah, it'll be right. It would be hybrid like before, but we are not going to be using the owl. We'll be using HW CAM setup. It'll be a little bit different, but hopefully better.
HW CAM with a zoom. So there's still a virtual component. Yeah.
Right. So they'll they'll enable a few things. They can, they'll be able to stream it live. One, they'll be able to upload it into YouTube much quicker because I guess the the batch processing and editing straight from their server is much quicker than when we send them our link from the cloud. And so I guess that, you know, it'll be good for residents thing. They'll be able to get a copy, the recording quicker on YouTube. They'll also be able to watch it live. And, you know, be a little bit more traditional in the way it's viewed where it'll be, you know, three people, the three select select board members at a table with the microphones kind of viewed at a distance.
All right.
That sounds good.
Catherine, you all set with the minutes?
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Thank Catherine. And thank you to Michelle and Joe for supporting all this stuff as well as Steve. So if anything else, we can go with the motion then, Peter.
Okay, with nothing left to discuss, I move that we adjourn the February fourteenth, twenty twenty three select board meeting at eight forty nine.
I don't think it's that late, is it?
Six four, six fifty, sorry. Wow.
Plus, we're going to executive session, right?
Yeah.
And then and then adjourning the meeting.
Yep. So correct. Yeah. So we got that slide out of order. Sorry there, Diane. So, yes. So Michelle, you got the last slide up?
Sorry.
All right. So I'll take this one. Move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations negotiations with non union personnel town administration.
Second.
Anything further? Other guys, roll call vote. And I should add in there and not to return to open session.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
There he is.
So where do I go now?
All right. So we're